Good evening, everyone. I am Mayor Beverly H. Burks, and this is September 2nd, and this is our September Clarkson City Council Meeting. I'll start with the roll call, starting with Vice Mayor Johnson.
Present.
Councilman Carroll.
Present.
Councilwoman Hood.
Present.
Councilwoman Bell.
Present.
Councilman Pince.
Present.
And Councilwoman Adey.
Present.
And I'll recognize our City Manager, Shaquilla Miller-Thorne.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
With that, are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, the agenda is accepted by common consent. We'll move with presentations in Item 3A, which is the presentation of the Downtown Development Authority proposed logo and branding. Is he not here? Okay, Dr. Garcia is not here. So we can, if you want counsel, defer this to the next meeting.
That would be great.
Is that fine for counsel?
Do you want a motion?
Yeah, let's just go ahead and make a motion on it.
I move that we defer the presentation of the Downtown Development Authority's proposed logo and branding until the September work session.
Okay. It's been properly moved and seconded that we defer the Downtown Development Authority proposed logo and branding to the September work session. Is there further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And all opposed? Motion passed. We'll move to B, and what we'll do, if the counsel would like, we'll go through all the recognitions, and then at one time, take the photos, so that we can make sure we don't have to go back and forth. Okay?
Good.
Thank you. So we'll have the first one, which is the Employee of the Month recognition, and that is Dr. Baker.
Perfect timing. All right, good evening. Is it on? Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. I'm here to present the Employee of the Month of the month of August 2025. This employee has consistently demonstrated exceptional leadership, professionalism, and commitment to the mission of the Police Department. Through sound judgment, productivity, decision-making, and effective supervision, he has fostered accountability, teamwork, and trust both within the division and throughout the community. His ability to maintain high moral and strengthen police communications reflects his dedication to the city's values and goals. This employee is also recognized for his positive attitude and collaborative spirit. He motivates peers, listens to input from subordinates, and leads by example with a solution-focused mindset. His efforts in streamlining processes, implementing innovative practices, and engaging with residents and business owners has earned him praise and strengthened the community overall. The Employee of the Month for August 2025 is Lieutenant Garfield Trumble.
Okay, all right. All right, congratulations.
And he also receives a $50 gift card.
All right, congratulations. So we'll make sure, have a seat, we'll take a photo later. We'll move next to the Police Department Award, August 2025, and that is with our Assistant Chief.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
City Mayor, City Council. If I can start with this narrative, to set the tone of why the Police Department is making this recognition with one of the detectives. On August 11, 2025, at 10:20, this detective responded to his family at the Exxon gas station on Montreal Road. His sister was securing the scene, locating witnesses, and reviewing evidence, and parting processing the crime scene. The male victim, later identified by his cell phone, unfortunately died at Grady Hospital. This detective was assisted by another detective by notifying the victim's mother of the incident. The next day, while canvassing the nearby apartment, 1,000 apartments, this detective spotted a suspect matching this fellow's footage, wearing the same clothing. Recognizing the male as the homicide suspect, this detective arrested the suspect without incident. During the interview, the detective secured a full conviction with the result of the suspect taken to jail. This detective's acts of action, investigative skills, and professionalism led to the arrest within 24 hours. Mayor, Madam, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Manager, City Council, I present the Investigative Award to Detective Cushing. We have the flag.
Okay.
And we have this creative, nice little glass. We're gonna have to actually leave.
Okay, all right. Don't go too far with it. One more, and then we'll take the photo.
That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now, we will have the Business of the Month, and that will be Mr. Jacob Bowie.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members, and City Manager, and community. The City of Clarkson is proud to recognize Al Chef as our August 2025 Business of the Month. Al Chef is a family-owned restaurant located in Clarkson Market and operated by the siblings Charbel and Miriam, with their parents Kareem and Seh Ham, bringing decades of culinary experience from Iraq, Lebanon, and Syria to the kitchen. Since opening in March of 2024, they've become known for homemade Middle Eastern dishes like falafel that bring comfort and a taste of home to our community. The Al Chef team not only serves delicious food, but also gives back by partnering with local religious centers here in Clarkson, sharing meals for family celebrations and sacred events. Please join me in congratulating Al Chef for their commitment to culture, family, and community here in Clarkson.
All right.
And they'll get the award later.
They're not here?
Not here.
Okay, all right, okay. All right, counsel, if you don't mind, we can go down and take the photos with our police officers. All right.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we don't have to.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm gonna have to talk. All right.
All right, everybody, ready? Three, two. Thank you, drill one and a half. All right, thank you.
Wait, you get your own photo, right? What? All right, come on.
Photo shot. No. Counsel, Counselwoman. Yes, you go first.
Come on, watch it. Hey. What's this about last week?
All right. All right, everybody, ready? Three, two. Thank you, drill one and a half. All right, thank you.
Wait, you get your own photo, right? What? All right, come on.
Photo shot.
Okay. But I did it all like that, you know?
All right, three, two. All right, one.
Okay, all right.
There you go.
Thank you, reps. Thank you very much. Big help.
And we definitely appreciate our Police Department and all the great work they do in terms of community policing. We'll move now to 3E, which is to approve the following meeting minutes, and starting with one, that would be August 7, 2025, the City Council meeting, and two, August 26, 2025, the City Council work session. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I have a motion, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move to approve the following meeting minutes, August 7, 2025, City Council meeting, and August 26, 2025, City Council work session.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, it has been properly moved and seconded to approve the following meeting minutes, August 7, 2025, City Council meeting, and August 26, 2025, City Council work session. Is there any discussion? Are you ready for the question? All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed. Now, we will move into 4A, which will be the City Manager's report, with City Manager Miller-Thorne.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Mayor. I'll just move through high-level points within the manager's report. I did provide to you all a version of the August 31, 2025 report via email on August 31. I have also completed supplemental for the Municipal Court and Patrol stats for August 31 of 2025. Administrative reporting, the City Manager's office is continuing to work through the completion of required reports that are due by the city in order to be compliant with the Department of Community Affairs. Some of these reports are from previous years, and I have provided a list of those reports for counsel. The 2025 reports have already been submitted via the manager's office. We have begun our community pop-up initiatives. The first pop-up, number one, was at Sage Point. The purpose of community pop-ups is to take education about our departments and our community partners to the community. We started off at Sage Point again, which is on East Poncelion Road. The second pop-up will be held on Thursday, September 11, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Clarkson Market. The Atlanta Regional Commission has joined us and has been featured at the pop-ups to take housing conversation to the community. Our first pop-up with ARC was a success, and we'll be using that information, the housing information, to inform the housing report that will be presented to counsel at the end of this month. Policy and code review. The City Manager's office is currently reviewing draft policy language as presented by City Attorney Quinn regarding change of the city's fiscal year to a June 30 year-end, and I'll be getting with Attorney Quinn regarding my comments on the draft. Financial policies review. The City Manager's office is completing a review of the city's financial policies in preparation of a completed draft of Financial Policies Manual. This will be a manual that will correlate with the city's procurement policy manual. Standard operating procedures. I am currently in review of departmental SOPs for each of our city departments, and will be in meeting with the department as to finalize the SOP drafts. Administration offices of the city clerk. Elections, qualifying for election was held from 8:30 to 4:30 p.m., daily beginning Monday, August 18 through Friday, August 22, except during the daily lunch break from 12 to 1:00 p.m. We have posted the qualified candidates on the city's website, and the link to that site is found in the report. Candidates for Mayor are Beverly H. Burks and Shawn Alexander-Bright. Candidates for City Council are Y.T. Bell, Nick Crawford, Lynn Bayon, and Dean Sumner Moore. Again, the election will be held on November 4, 2025. Initiatives. Currently, we are, the City Manager is reviewing document management software platforms, and has reviewed software options with planning and economic development for permitting and licensing. That contract is on the agenda for this evening. Policy and procedure amendments implementation upon direction of the City Manager's office. We have revamped the occupational tax licensing process and has been streamlined through complete processing and review, complete review through the city clerk's office with processing in the finance office for invoices. This remedies the bottleneck that was found in the Finance Department. Program activities, agenda management software implementation is nearing completion. Right now, we're downloading historical data from minutes and agendas to the software application on the city's website. There has been successful completion of the election candidate qualifying week that we just spoke of. The city clerk's office completed her online notary training course, and 39 open records requests have been received in August with nine business licenses and seven applications currently in process. Grants and awards. Of course, we know that the International City Counter Managers Association has presented the city with a $304,000 grant award for the implementation of the Economic Mobility Assistant Program. The city was one of 16 cities within the nation to get the award. We have submitted executive agreement to ICMA. The EMO position has been posted on the city's applicable sites, and we look to onboard the new Economic Mobility Specialist within the coming weeks. Communications, our Communications Director position continues in active status. We are soliciting third-party assistance and support for communication services, and we expect to establish contract by September 2025. We do anticipate that the contract amount will be within the city manager's spending limits, being that we only have a few months left in the year. Finance audit preparation for 2024. We are continuing to provide audit work papers to the auditor for review. The auditor is currently composing sample sets of transactions that will be sent to the finance office as next steps in the process, and our due date for submission has been extended to December 31. 2025 budget review and 2026 budget preparation. We have held a set of internal budget workshops for our executive leadership team. We have also begun separate and individual departmental meetings with ELC members. Those meetings began today, and we are working now to formalize priorities within the budget so that we can present budget draft to a collection of council members before presenting the draft in open forum. Policy and procedures implementation. The following policies and procedures have been drafted and are amended by Finance Director Cynthia Hammond. These policies have been presented to me for review. One is an accounts payable SOP, pay-to-cash reimbursement policy, and travel expense policy. All of these policies will be included in the Financial Policies Manual. Human resources, classification and compensation. Final consultant reporting job descriptions have been received by the city. We do anticipate implementing the new classification and compensation structure within the 2026 budget proposal. I have also presented to the Human Resource Office the establishment of a facility maintenance function within the Public Works Department. This function is going to be strategic in making sure that we have a effective approach to maintenance of this facility and any new facilities that we bring on. We've moved from about 10,000 square-foot facilities to an almost 30,000 square-foot facility, so having a bottleneck and monitor regularly the building and its needs is going to be vital. The goal is to incorporate the function within the job description of a current public works position. Staffing level as of 8:31. We have 51 total on the workforce. We lost an intern on August 22, but we also gained a new intern from, through the Georgia State University Masters Program, CPA Masters Program. Open positions currently are the Deputy Court Clerk, Public Works Director, which we currently have an interim Public Works Director, Public Works Laborer, Economic Mobility Special Assistant, and a vacant position that has not been solicited as of yet is a Special Events Coordinator. We have begun a drug-free workplace policy and testing program to expand our drug program, drug testing and safety program to in-service, random drug screenings. And we have, we are the Human Resource Director, and I are in constant review of our new HR policy. We have a red line version in front of us, and we are sitting weekly to finalize the draft for approval. And we've also implemented a contagious symptoms policy. With the uptick in COVID-related cases, we thought that it beneficial to revisit our COVID policies and to implement a policy that is more in line with current CDC guidelines or regulations. We're working through the renters' insurance policies, special events coverage, and of course, health benefits transition. We are also establishing a safety, emergency, and safety protocol, not just for this building, but for staff and operations that are positioned across the city. Parks and Recreation, of course, is continuing to work, continuing to work on this Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and Mylum Park is officially closed as of September 1. And I'm trying to go fast, y'all. Program updates. We have soccer program that starts September 15 and goes through November 15. Planning and economic development activities. The annexation RFP has been reviewed and commented on by the City Manager. It was composed by the Planning Director, and it is ready for solicitation this week. Comp Plan RFQ has actually went live on August 18 on Vietnam and Georgia Procurement Registry. The National Planning Association grant application has been submitted. The Urban Act Plan, and we got a lot of things going on, y'all, so just bear with me. The Urban Act Plan, four of the five stakeholder committee meetings was held on August 28, and during this meeting, plan priorities were confirmed for build-out and recommendation. Code compliance, the Code Compliance Office has reinstated weekend scheduling as of August 23. 60 compliance inspections have been conducted from August 11 to August 22. And I'll just skim this for some high-level. You have the public safety crime stats in the packet as well. Of course, within Public Works on the capital improvement side, we are now engaging in the Greenway Trail Study Plan. The project management team met last week. We are also engaged in the SS4A, the Safe Streets For All Safety Action Plan. We have bi-weekly meetings of that project management team as well, and then the steering committee adoption approval is on the agenda for this evening. And last but not least, for Municipal Court, and this is a supplemental to the report that I sent to you on August 31. We had a special meeting session with Municipal Court Judge Will, Assistant Court Judge, Judge Jonathan Weintraub, myself, the City Court Administrator, Ms. Triplet, Police Chief Hudson, City Attorney Quinn, and Solicitor Julie Kirk, along with public defender Lee Chambers. And the purpose of this meeting was to discuss the necessity for the city to have an ICE protocol in place as it relates to a potential ICE or ICE incident arising during municipal court sessions. All of the parties present presented their perspective on what a plan should look like, and Ms. Triplet was charged with putting a written document of protocol together and presenting it to the judges and myself to review, and then that plan will go to City Attorney Quinn for his review before we decide on an effective implementation date. Thank you, I'm sorry.
All good stuff, and I just want to make sure the pool is closed on September 1, right?
Yes, the pool, not the park.
The pool, the pool is closed on September.
I saw the faces, so I just wanted to make sure we clarify that part.
Okay, all right.
No problem, no problem. And now, we'll have the City Attorney.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have our annual legislative update for you tonight. So the Georgia General Assembly, a couple stats. They introduced 2,860 bills, if you can believe it. 347 passed both chambers. Seven were vetoed, so we have 340 new laws. And I am certainly not going to talk about all of them. Looks like I've got about 10 here or less that may be relevant to us. So first is real property taxes and sales tax, HB 92. You'll recall from last year the floating homestead exemption and FOST law, and the City Council opted out of that. So the legislature followed that up with a new law, which, for one thing, requires cities to re-opt out, if that's a word, by March 1, 2027. After that, cities and counties can opt back in, but not opt out. They've also added a statement to tax bills that basically says, use the City of Clarkson as an example. The City of Clarkson has elected to opt out of the floating homestead exemption and gives the phone number for City Hall. The other thing it added is that annually, the city, and we did this already earlier this year, basically, the city can, if it wants, establish an estimated rollback rate. That if it's established, that will go out on the notice of tax assessments to the property owners. And if not, what those notice of tax assessments will do is the same as they've done over the years, which is basically to tell what the mileage rate was last year and then estimate your tax based on that. Okay, gas station video surveillance, HB 513. So a 2024 Georgia law preempted local ordinances that required cameras at gas stations. Now, the city had adopted an ordinance in 2013 that did not require those cameras, but it said that if you want to stay open late, you need to have a camera. And I had given the city my opinion that our law was not preempted because it wasn't a requirement, but an option. Now, that was just my opinion, of course. Now, the state has come back and legislated to explicitly grandfather local ordinances adopted prior to May 6, 2024. So it's now certain that the Clarkson ordinance is legal and enforceable. Open Records Act, SB 12. This requires that open records act requests be made directly to the designated custodian of records. So the city has acted to designate the city clerk as the custodian. Previously, there was a Georgia case that said- Previously, there was a Georgia case that said, notwithstanding that, anybody in the city has to respond. And that created problems. So now, the law is clear that the requestor needs to make the request to the custodian. So, and this applies to multiple of these, but for this one specifically, I'll follow up with the city manager to get the right information to the right departments. This one will be kind of an all-department thing, that they should direct requesters to the city clerk. Another element of that same law is that it puts an obligation on the custodian of records to retrieve records from private entities, for example, a contractor. And so you can't just say, "We don't have that." You have to go to them and get it, assuming that it deals with city business, of course. But there is not a requirement like that to get records from other agencies, for example, DeKalb County, or the Clarkston DDA, or anything other than City of Clarkston. Campaign Contribution Reports, SB 199. Disclosure Reports Are Changing For Municipal Candidates. Reports Will Be Made To The State Ethics Commission Rather Than Local Election Superintendent. However, this does not take effect until December 31st, 2026. So that'll be for our next election cycle, not this one. Digital IDs, HB 296. This Requires Law Enforcement Officers To Accept A Specifically Defined Type Of Digital Identification. And the deadline to start accepting that is July 1st, 2027. So plenty of time to work out the details there. Public Works Bidding, HB 137. This Raised The Threshold Amount Defining Public Works Under The State Law From A $100,000 Project To $250,000. The City's Purchasing Ordinance That We Adopted In 2024 Anticipated This Change And Incorporated The State Law By Reference, So There's Nothing We Need To Do There. Housing Manager Contact Person, HB 399. This Requires Out-of-State Landlords To Engage A Georgia Property Manager To Be Responsible For Communicating With Tenants And Responding To Their Complaints About The Property. And City Code Enforcement Officers Are Allowed To Obtain The Property Manager Contact Information From The Tenant If There Is Probable Cause To Believe A Code Violation Is Present On The Property. Significant caveat here is that the law only applies to single-family homes and duplexes, not to apartments. And finally, we have drone regulations, HB 58. This Prohibits The Flying Of A Drone Within 400 Feet Of A Ticketed Entertainment Or Sports Event. For Our Purposes, The Important Aspect, I Guess, Is That This Law Preempts Local Legislation Regulating Drones. And happy to entertain any questions, or to have a conversation about any of these offline with anyone that's interested. And as I mentioned, I'll be following up with Madam City Manager and providing some written information on specific things.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you, City Attorney. We'll now move into Council Remarks, starting with Vice Mayor Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On August the 12th, I had the pleasure of attending Smart Me Clarkston Coalition Meeting. This is the four-month program for entrepreneurs. I think they say they're gonna elect or pick eighteen people. And it's a four-month program for local business, small business, up-and-coming businesses, should I say. And on August the 14th, I had the pleasure of attending the pop-up at Sage Point. That was a very good turnout. That was nice. And we got a lot of comments about what the residents would like to see going forward with our housing, so that was good. On August the 18th, I attended the mayor's Tottstown Hall, and I helped Amara find her pumpkin. So I read a book to the kids. That was very exciting. And I didn't get sick, by the way. What's your Nika Bell? And on August the 29th, I did attend a Zoom with our Recreation Master Plan company. Carlos was amazing. So he, we went over a lot of the things that are coming down the pike with selecting what we're gonna do with our parks, what our community wants, and a lot of the community, the community has an engagement process in that plan as well. So I look forward to seeing that play out. And last but not least, on Saturday, we have our food drive at the Tahoe Village Shopping Center from 10 until supplies last. I hope to see all of y'all out there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Carroll?
No remarks.
Okay. Councilwoman Hood?
Yes, thank you. I also attended the Housing Pop-Up Event at Sage Point Apartments. And this was a new effort on our part to take our information to the citizens versus having the citizens come to us. And we have another one coming up soon. The city manager mentioned that. So I think this is a good way to continue to improve our communication with the residents. I was also at the Tottstown Hall, and as usual, it was exciting. The kids are phenomenal, and they had a great time. And everybody who comes there and helps with those programs has a good time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Perkins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I hope everybody enjoyed their extended holiday weekend. I am, I just wanted to sound excited to see things moving forward, just with the improvements we're making to our city's digital infrastructure. Played around, if y'all haven't looked at the new Agenda Management software, it's already live online, some elements of it. It's not all built out yet in terms of uploading previous meetings, but I'm really excited to see improvements like that. This is moving forward to making the city more accessible and transparent. So, on August 11th, I attended our Downtown Development Authority's open house before their meeting. My schedule happened to line up that morning, so thanks to the folks that showed up to that. It was good having conversations and just building communication between both our Downtown Development Authority as well as Council, since we have to work together on things just to make sure that we have open lines of communication there, and have an understanding of each other's goals and kind of what we're hoping to see in the city, and making sure that that's reflective of the larger community. On the 14th, I also attended the Housing Summit Open House. Y'all got to get the AC fixed outside. I don't know who we talked to about that. It was very hot, but I appreciated suffering with y'all through that. Had some great conversations with folks at Sage Point. So thank y'all to our staff for putting that together. On August 22nd, I also attended the memorial service for Officer David Rose. I have struggled to find words to capture everything that happened there. I'm still at a loss, but please keep his family and your thoughts and prayers. There is a GoFundMe that his wife started that you can find online that donates just to help cover funeral expenses. He leaves two young children, and his wife is expecting as well. He was a police officer, he, if I remember correctly, started in March of this year. And if I may, he, the, the number of lives that were saved by him showing up, I don't know if, what's frustrating with this is that the news cycle has already moved on, by and large. He was, if I understand the timeline correctly, out getting lunch, heard the call go out, and was the first on scene. And when he arrived, the gunman, who ended up firing 180 rounds into the CDC, fired into his vehicle. And then because he showed up, retreated into the CVS instead of continuing to try and gain access to the CDC campus. After he retreated, that's when the rest of the law enforcement was able to show up. So I don't know if we ever fully will know the number of lives that he saved because of his sacrifice. Hope that we do not forget him, even though a lot of the news cycle has moved on. On August 8th, I think, transitioned to that, or sorry, August 27th, I had the pleasure of attending our Public Safety and Legal Committee Meeting, where we talked about a number of things. Councilwoman Bell, I won't steal your thunder on that, since you're the chair of that committee. And that is all.
All right. Thank you for that. And Councilwoman Bell?
Thank you, everybody. So, to Councilmember Perkins' comment, the Public Safety and Legal Committee did a meet on August 27th. We were able to have a very robust conversation, about two hours, on what we would discuss the appointment of Frederick Holloman. I don't see Mr. Holloman, but he was appointed to the Public Safety and Legal Committee, so we appreciate him and his willingness to serve. But we also discussed the Together For Tomorrow Summit, which has been a summit that we launched last year, that we're gonna take a different angle this year, and we're actually gonna work with schools in order to get direct input from youth on gun violence and what should be some of the proactive solutions that we should take in working and co-designing what that program looks like with them. In addition to that, we also have some recommendations for you, chief, in regards to some innovative ways as we looked at the crime stats. And then we also talked about other partnerships and things that other cities are doing as it relates to reducing crime and making it a community issue and not just public safety issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
And today's my birthday.
Oh, okay. All right. Happy birthday. Which version you want? Okay, no big, all right. And we'll keep it happy, we'll keep it on a happy note. Councilwoman Adie?
No report.
Okay, thank you. And then I'll move into the mayor's report. I also attended on the 12th, the Start Me Coalition Call. Attended the pop-up at Sage Point. I was a panelist for the second year for the Council for Quality Growth with their intersection conference that they had. And I was a panelist with Mayor Rusty Paul and Mayor Vince Williams. And so we talked about infrastructures and what it means for local mayors and all the different nuances that we experience. So I was happy to be able to attend that, and the city manager, as well as our planning director, also attended as well. We had our Tottstown Hall, and so if you're new to hearing about this, this is an initiative that I started. Mayor Melanie Hammack in Pine Lake did it. And so I said I would, you know, do it, but do it my, my version of it. And so we incorporate literacy, we make sure in terms of government and understanding where our future leaders are in terms of knowing stormwater. This one, we always do for the summer, we teach them about steam. So we were focused on gardens and hydroponics and those things, just so that part of young minds, and they're all four and three-year-olds, so that's all I got, a quarter, you know, once a quarter, that's all I have for them. But it's making sure that they have the opportunity to have awareness. And so part of, that's the responsibility that we have, is to give them that awareness about their community, about opportunities, and things that they may not have the opportunity to learn about. So I love doing that with the children, and again, thank you for council for doing that. Participated with the DeKalb Municipal Association Quarterly Meeting that we have for the entire DeKalb Municipal Association Elected Officials. Also participated and attended Officer Rose's memorial service. And again, we, we appreciate the sacrifice that our officers do on a daily basis, and how, when they leave home, they leave not knowing if they are going to return, but knowing that they're giving their all when they walk out that door. And so we appreciate the sacrifices that Officer Rose gave to DeKalb, to the residents of DeKalb and the CDC. I also attended the Kiwanis Club of Atlanta's luncheon, where they had the new CEO for Global Village Project. And if you're not familiar with Global Village Project, that is an all-girls refugee middle school. And so they take young ladies who are new to the country in various stages, and they help them to grow and learn. And so they are ready and equipped to go to high school once they leave that middle school. And it's such a wonderful opportunity to see how these young ladies, who often are invisible, have the opportunity to have that leadership and bonding and how they work together. So we had an opportunity, myself, as well as the city manager, as guests of our GMA Representative Michael McPherson, to attend that as well, as Clarkston delegation. And so, the August 28th, I was a presenter, along with some of my other cohorts, who went to the unhoused trip to Texas. And so I presented to DeKalb County Council of the Whole to talk about our trip and provide recommendations. So we recognize in terms of the unhoused, it is gonna require all of us to work together on this. It is going to require not only a DeKalb intervention, but it is going to require a regional approach as we're looking at how are we going to address our unhoused community. And it also requires that we look at each individual in terms of how we support that person. And so we gave recommendations to the Council of the Whole, the commissioners. And so we're going to make sure in terms of working not only with Madam CEO, the commissioners, but all in terms of the region, so that we can make sure the people who are unhoused have opportunities, whether they are low barrier, trying to go through the system, or the ones who are at different stages. So we evaluated all of that, and we were very happy to make sure to find, to give those findings to the DeKalb commissioners. And finally, on a note, a high note, we're on a roll. We are on a roll. I'm so excited because, again, we had our ARC in terms of our Housing Summit, and I'm a member of the African-American Mayors Association, and we were selected to be a part of the EMILY, which is the Economic Mobility Leadership Institute. And as part of that, we are going to be focused on home buying. And we will have for six to eight weeks a fellow, as well as receiving $5,000, to provide workshops to our residents to help them learn about home buying. You know, we keep talking about buying homes, right? But we need to make sure people are prepared to be able to have a home, whether it's the credit score, whether it's understanding the lead, the closing costs, inspections, all of those things. And so we will have that program, and we will have support with that as well. So I'm very excited that we can tie all of this together. We're getting inputs, input from our residents to find out what their needs are. We'll be able to take this and help them in terms of this home buying module, and we'll also be able to use that information as we go into our comprehensive plan. So it's showing how everything is connected together, and so I'm very excited about that. And we'll make, I'll make sure to provide the information to the council, so if we want to add to it, we can add to it. We're looking at some of our partners that are gonna help in terms of participating with this program as well. So I'm very excited, and I'm very excited to make sure our residents have access to this information. And so as we're building homes, we're gonna build people to be able to buy them. So I'm excited about that. So with that, we'll move into public comments. And so any member of the public may address the council during the time allotted for public comments. Each attendee will be allowed three minutes for comments at the discretion of the presiding officer. The public comment period will be limited to 40 minutes, and it's not a time for dialogue. If your comment contains a series of questions, please submit those to the city clerk in writing. This will facilitate follow- This will facilitate follow-up by the council or staff. The city council desires to allow an opportunity for public comment. However, the business of the city must proceed in an orderly and timely manner. And we have Ms. June. Do we have anyone signed up today?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor. We have six individuals here. So I have Anthony Singleton, I have David Rando, William Gamble, Debbie Gathman, Martha Brown, and De'ara Northfleet, if I pronounced her name correctly.
Okay, Mr. Anthony, correct? That's the first one?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Anthony. Come to the mic.
It's right.
Okay, good.
I'm Anthony Singleton. I'm all business owner in Clarkston, Food To Go. And I guess my statement or comment today is about the new structure of the parking lot that's going on, what's about supposed to be valet. It's more so a paid parking lot now, and it's affecting my business and probably other businesses in that area. So I'm just going to put my opinion on it.
Okay, thank you. Okay. And who's the next person, Ms. June?
We have David Rando.
Mr. Gamble is calling for us. Come, call.
Okay. All right, come to the mic.
Good evening, everyone. My name's William Gamble. I'm one of the owners at Strokers Club in Clarkston. How are you all tonight?
How you doing?
The same topic as the previous speaker, the negative impact that the parking situation has gotten to be in the Rocket Point Shopping Center. It was approved by the council to have a valet situation there, and that's not what they're doing. They're doing paid parking, which is a violation, and it's having a negative impact on our business. The people that are running the parking lot out there are our landlord, they do own the property, the shopping center, but we're tenants, and they have no affiliation directly, economically or in any other way, with each of the businesses that it's having a negative impact on, of Food To Go, Strokers, and other businesses that aren't here tonight. They're charging and overcharging customers just to park to come to my business. They have no economic impact consequences if a customer turns around and drives away, however we do. And I would just like the council to consider that arrangement.
Thank you. Who else do we have?
Debbie Gathman.
Okay, and I'll give you a minute to prep everything. Ms. Debbie, come on up.
I thought they were going back to the mic. Okay, I have new shoes, I'm walking faster. A little bit faster. I'm Debbie Gathman. I live at 928 Mel Avenue. I want to address something. I'm confused about public comments because sometimes we do it while the thing is being discussed. But this is about the Safe Streets. Yeah, it's about the Safe Streets project that you guys are doing, which I read the 4,000 pages you guys had on it. Here's my two concerns. Number one, I see that you're going to charge 20 bucks to maintain, and if there's two of them on my street, does that mean I would owe 40 bucks? So this is a question, I don't know who to address it to. Jason?
So you're referring to our traffic calming?
Yeah, the traffic calming piece.
Right. And so we can make sure in terms of what that means as far as...
Yeah, we need some clarity because everyone on my street almost had a heart attack. As you know, we all had a huge tax increase, and now it'll be 40 bucks more, and we don't like it. Many people love those speed humps. I personally did not sign the petition. I was furious that we put them in. I hate those dang things. I used to be a school bus driver. I think they're a hazard. And we already had a guy who had a horrifying wreck at one of them, and ran into my other car and totaled it and knocked down my fence. It was a big drum of fest, this was the year before last. And the reason he did that was, not only was he roaring drunk, but he caught the edge of the speed hump that's going down the hill, and you can't see it coming up the hill because of the shadows of the trees, and he caught it on his truck and flew into my yard and smashed my car. And it was a huge disaster that took up my whole spring to figure out. So I don't think the speed humps are a great idea. I think they're a terrible idea. I didn't vote for them. I didn't sign the petition. I'll have a heart attack if I have to pay 20 bucks to maintain them. A heart attack. I'm not kidding, a heart attack. So I just want to be clear. And I didn't understand, is it retroactive? Because our speed humps are already in, so we'll still be paying the 20, 40 bucks. I don't like that. So just think about it. I would rather they were taken out, but I see that costs us 50 bucks, so that seems puzzling to me.
Thank you. Who else did we have signed up? The next person, Martha Brown.
Don't worry, I'm not going to get up for that. Hello, I'm Martha Brown. I live on Clark Street. You know my drill. I first want to say that, to start out by saying, that no wildlife sanctuary, green space, native flower garden, sustainable landscaping, a backyard full of native plants, our gardens, a piece of land by you that's a little forest, ever, 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 is underutilized because it provides habitat for wildlife. So I just want to clarify that. You don't have to make things up about green spaces. So that being said, I want to say I had the opportunity to walk through with several people from the South Fork Conservancy, and I know Dan Chapman has also been in touch with the city manager. I actually bumped into Jennifer, who is the photographer with her four-year-old son several weeks ago, and I had already been networking with Dan. So I walked through with her, just synchronicity-wise, had an amazing time. It was a beautiful experience. And then on August 28th, last Wednesday, I walked through with Kayla, their director, Dan Chapman, and Dave Butler, colleague of Susan Hood. And lots of good things to say about you, Susan. He said hi. And I just wanted to say that these people are a plethora of information. It's a beautiful opportunity. They're going to be working on the Greenway path for that. And I felt very valued and very grateful for that experience. I want to remind the city that Friendship Forest has a resolution that's been filed by the state, and it was filed by Carla Drenner. So if our state representative, if anyone's questioned that, I want to say thank you to Mark, who always participates and wants to understand the networking of the green spaces. I also want to say that it's been nice this summer. The Public Works guys didn't over-bucher Friendship Forest, so there was a lot of native plants that grew that never had a chance to, so that was great. I don't know if I'm covering everything. I also wanted to say, I wanted to thank the city manager, the city planner, for a meeting with me, being heard about my concerns having to the city. It was a really beautiful opportunity, and I thank you. I look forward to walking through Friendship Forest with you when you're ready. I also want to double down and thank Richard and also YT for the ordinance with the Blighted House program, because possibly we'll get the one across the street from here. God, after 30 years, this is a beautiful thing. And also, I wanted to thank Jamie for always answering the phone and calling me back. And I appreciate everybody. I know being a city councilperson is not easy, and we all appreciate your service. Thank you. Thanks for listening.
All right, thank you. Do we have anyone else?
The last person we have is De'ara Northfleet, if I'm pronouncing that correct.
How you doing today? De'ara Northfleet, I'm the operating manager of Two Point of Room Spa. That's actually one of the slums in that same class of Strokers and Food To Go. And definitely concur with what was said earlier by my neighbor and partners up there. But in addition to that, especially with us, what made it amazing, inconveniences, we use booking apps in order to, you know, grow our clientele. So those booking apps generate a lot of new leads. So these would be people that would be, you know, coming to your business for their first time, someone coming to try to, you know, support our business on the first visit. They encounter some unnecessary fee in the parking lot that has nothing to do with our business. So we ran into that issue with it, so it discouraged a few people, you know, coming in initially, had different pool with them online, but they would get to the parking lot. It's something that, you know, the guy outside about, something these guys are just doing. Now, I think, too, it's just a better, more polished way that they could do it. I can see how it could be beneficial due to the fact we have a lot of females in the parking, a lot of women in the parking lot, you know what I'm saying? We have a lot of women employees there, you know, we have one coming here out of the lunchroom at, we have a lunchroom at there as well. So I can see how, you know, it could definitely be beneficial for them to, you know, have the valet service pull your car apart, wash the cars, you know what I'm saying? Wash the girls go back and forth to the cars, just like, they just took a real bush league like approach to it. It was just like, they just showed up on the Fourth of July, just roped the lot off and just got to just regulating, just doing all kinds of stuff. They didn't even get so much as in the same tee shirt or shirt until this past week they just came up, and that's only because they kind of felt the heat and what's going on. So they tried to, you know, tried to organize their efforts a little more in these just last few days. But up until then, it's really been just, it's just been just really, they've just been day to day, moment to moment, not even consistent with so much as the price. A girl charged, one girl $10, one girl $20, one girl $60, in the same night. So this kind of thing, so. Anyway, that's just my little two cents on it. But like I said, I can see how it could be beneficial if they just get in more professional policy. That's it. Thank you guys for your time. Everybody.
Thank you. Ms. June, was that everyone?
Yes. What was on the list?
Do we have anyone else? Okay, hearing none, we'll move into closed public comments, and we'll move into old business, starting with 6A, which is to consider for adoption and ordinance to amend Articles Four and Article Seven of the Clarkston zoning ordinance to add definitions and regulations for child daycare, adult daycare, convenience stores, grocery stores, fitness centers, and small food retail. And that would be Mr. Edwards.
All right, thank you, Mayor and council. So an update on this one, we changed a little bit. For all the ones in NC1, we have been listed as conditional on here now. I know there was some discussion that the council wanted to debate a little more on that. And other than that, that was the only changes we made to the section of the ordinance. Now staff is just looking for guidance on how you want those uses to be allowed or not allowed. I'll just go back over to you for any questions.
Okay. With that, are you ready for the motion, or do you need some more discussion? Yes.
I have the motion.
Okay.
Yes, I would move that we approve...
Now, your mic's not on. Press it down.
Yes, I moved that we approve the proposed changes to the ordinance under old business, Item 6A, with the change that convenience stores without fuel pumps, convenience stores with fuel pumps, and fitness centers of 5,000 square feet or less not be permitted in those districts. Period.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All right, it has been properly moved and seconded to approve... Let me pull that one back up there. Sorry. Why is this not coming up? Okay. Sorry. To approve... Why is it not coming back up here? I haven't switched. Councilwoman Hood, would you redo that one for me?
Yes. It's Item 6A, to consider for adoption and ordinance to amend Articles Four and Six of the Clarkston zoning ordinance to add definitions and use regulations for child daycare, adult daycare, convenience stores, grocery stores, fitness centers, and small food retail. And my motion is to approve these changes with the following edit, and that is that convenience stores without fuel pumps, convenience stores with fuel pumps, and fitness centers less than 5,000 square feet not be permitted in those districts at all. The current proposal says that they would be permitted as conditional uses.
Okay, thank you. With that, is there any discussion on the motion?
When you say these districts, you're referring to NC1?
Yes, NC1.
So my discussion is, is that I think conditional use may be more appropriate because NC1 is kind of a patchwork. There are parts of it that are right by the highway, in which case I think, you know, a convenience store with or without fuel pumps may be appropriate there. There are parts of it that are in the middle of busy commercial areas, in which case I think a fitness center may be appropriate there. There are also parts of NC1 that are near residential areas, in which case it may not be appropriate to have a fitness store or a convenience store with or without gas pumps. So I would recommend leaving it as conditional use, and that would let the council distinguish between areas where it would be appropriate and it wouldn't be appropriate, rather than just banning it, period. Ideally, if we had a better zoning map where NC1 wasn't in residential areas, or it wasn't in the busy areas by the highway, then you could just ban it, period, in that district. But since we do have the current patchwork zoning map, I think it makes sense to just leave it as a conditional use, rather than punishing the areas by the highway in order to save the areas that are in residential.
May I respond?
Yes.
Yes, we mentioned at the work session, and Mr. Edwards mentioned this as well, that there are some inconsistencies with NC1. But I believe that the better land use decisions relative to the variety of properties in the city that have this zoning, the better land use decision is to prohibit them from those districts. We certainly do not need cheap by jowl of residential properties to have a gas station in them or a convenience store, which has been identified in discussions that they bring in, they are a source frequently of crime and litter and trash and noise. And so, yes, we need to take action on the city's part to redefine NC1, and perhaps it needs to be two different classifications. But in the meantime, I don't think the answer is to have a conditional approval under any way, shape, or form that would permit these things to be in those districts.
Okay. All right, Councilman Perkins?
So I can understand the concern with convenience stores, you know, with gas stations in residential districts, but I disagree with the idea that this is not an appropriate use of the land. I think when you look at it from an environmental perspective and to the points that have already been made of the, you know, kind of patchwork quilt that we have, I agree with Councilman Carroll's proposal that we allow it as a conditional use. Again, that means there are checks and balances to it. But from an environmental perspective, you know, if we want to reduce the use of vehicles, you know, everybody always is talking about traffic, this is one way to do it. Make things walkable. Make it where you can walk to a convenience store. I grew up in a neighborhood where you could walk everywhere. We had parks within walking distance. We had a bakery within walking distance. Our next-door neighbor had a live-work situation where they had a kiosk, where you could get popsicles, and they lived in the back. It was a great place to, you know, to... It was a great place to, you know, to grow up. So I think the idea that it's like inappropriate for all of these uses, I don't quite agree with that. I could see if we wanted to remove the convenience, the fuel pump side of it and make that just blanket prohibited, but the others I do think would make sense as conditional uses.
But these aren't bakeries.
Councilwoman Hood? Okay, thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak on this? Okay. All right, I'll let you have your opportunity.
Yes. Yes, these aren't bakeries. If this was bakery, I might be discussing this differently, but this is a convenience store. Convenience stores are not necessarily mom and pop little places where you can go in and get them up. Convenience stores, even without gas pumps, are a heavy use. And I would much rather err on the side of protecting the neighborhood and our residents, even if that means we have to come back and reestablish a different definition of NC1. So this to me, I understand, yes, we're saying it's conditional, but there really ought not to be any way it can be done at all. There is nothing that would guarantee to neighborhoods that certain conditions would be met and that this thing would be in their front yard. So I feel very strongly about this. And that's all I have to say on it unless somebody else brings up something.
Okay, Councilwoman Bill?
So what I'll say to this is this is a bigger issue that we've already discussed. This is a zoning map issue. If you look at the zoning map, NC1 is the issue and how it's plotted around our map. It has nothing to do with the desires. Of course, we all want to protect the neighborhood. I think what both parties are saying, one is the conditional, because we still want walkability, we want connectability, and we also want diversified economic streams throughout the city. And if we do what has been suggested, no point of anybody, that will solely plummet that concept, especially when we have larger issue. We don't have a lot of land to build on and options for that. So at this time, I think that the conditions make more sense they brought to the council. We identify what is appropriate for that piece of land instead of just removing it altogether.
Okay. Any other comments?
I said one more briefing.
May, Councilman Perkins?
Thank you. I'd be fine if we added bakeries to this, too, for the record. But, for the record. But I do, there are size limitations. I think if the concern is that we have this sprawling convenience store, I think they are limited to 2,700 feet. And so if there's not a building on any of these lots, that is 2,700 square feet, then you wouldn't have a convenience store there. So I think there are other, you know, we talked just about the conditional use is one of the checks and balances. The existing state of the land and the structures on the lands is also another check and balance. And there's only one small strip that really abuts, single-family zoning. Most of it is parking lots. It's already some homes have been converted to retail. I believe there is a Georgia Power substation, I think, on that same strip, and a career center. And so I think there's still a buffer to protect, you know, people's, you know, well-being while allowing additional things to be built right there along the path. There may be a few other areas, but again, it's already, there's like maybe one other area that's right behind the Clarkson Community Center and Library. So it's already pretty mixed use back in a lot of these spaces. But again, we have conditional use permits. If we find a situation that doesn't work, there's a check and balance there.
Okay. With that, you ready for a question?
Yes.
Yesterday.
Okay, so I have a motion to allow the amendments to regulate land use for child daycare, adult daycare, convenience stores, grocery stores, fitness centers, and small food retail with disallowing convenience stores without fuel pumps, those with fuel pumps, and fitness centers under 5,000 square feet from certain districts, contrary to the current proposal that allows that as a conditional use.
In NC1.
In NC1. Okay. Are you ready for a question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You have to say aye. Yes, we actually.
Although it says, although it said nay.
Nay.
Oh, my goodness. Okay. All right, wait, we had a three-three. Okay. All right, I'll do the aye. I'll do the aye, so it passed. All right, we'll move to the next one, which is consent agenda, and that is 7A through 7D. And I'll ask Councilman Carroll to take it away.
Okay. I move that we adopt the consent agenda. A, to adopt and amend Chapter 10 of City Code regarding traffic, create a new Article 6 regarding traffic comm measures, just that was maintenance fee collected from real properties to benefit from traffic comm devices. B, to approve resolution authorizing traffic comm policy. C, to approve resolution to declare firearms surplus property of the city of Clarkson. D, to approve resolution authorizing agreement of same networks for the permitting inspection, licensing, good enforcement, software maintenance, and support service amount of $112,388 for secure term to be funded out of the general fund.
Is there a second? Okay, all right. It's been properly moved and seconded to approve on a consent agenda, A through D. And with consent agenda, we had our work session last week. There's no further deliberation on these items. So the council is in agreement to vote on the affirmative for all. So with that, all in favor of approving items A through D, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion. Now we'll move to new business, starting with 8A, and that is to consider for adoption a resolution to approve the city council employee health benefits for plan for year 2026. And that would be Dr. Baker with the presentation, correct?
Yes, that's correct. Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. This is basically, we conducted a survey. Last week, we had a discussion, or two weeks ago, rather, we had a discussion about our health plan. And I know some of you had some concerns, and I took it back to the employees to get a survey. We had 24 employees to respond to the survey. Most employees are open and positive about the potential change to the healthcare plan. Some of the concerns were the coverage quality and the plan's structure. They strongly support the cost-free medical services, but remain concerned about the affordability and the quality, clarity of the plan. They expressed the interest that we must communicate clearly, be transparent about the costs, and have hands-on education are critical to make this a smooth transition. Tonight, I have with us our broker and the representative from Curative Insurance Company. And if you will come up. And I think Councilwoman Hood had some questions as it relates to the cash card, providing an explanation as it relates to compliant versus non-compliant, and the pharmacy.
Whoever would you like me to start?
Wherever you want to start.
Take it away.
Talk about the cash card first, right? The cash card is purely to alleviate any stress or any inconvenience for a member when they go to the doctor. The cash card is, there is no interest, it's not the employee's cash card, it belongs to Curative. Curative sends it to every 18-year-old plus on the health plan. So any dependents that are 18 years and above get a cash card. If they go to the doctor and they want to just pay cash, it's our cash. They swipe the card, bill paid, they don't get any EOBs. Our plan is set up where all of the benefits in-network are zero cost. So the cash card is just really to alleviate any stress they might have of, I'm Curative, I'm with Curative, go to the doctor. I worked for Anthem for a lot of years, so I'm new to Curative. As of the beginning of this year, I've used the cash card. It's a very convenient, very easy thing to have for any member that needs it. The.
Compliant versus non-compliant.
So the, I'll talk about the formulary real quick. So the formulary, there's a zero-cost drug for every condition you can be diagnosed with on our formulary. Our founder is a biochemical engineer, did a lot of studies on medications and various kinds of different things. And our aim is to deliver zero-cost drugs as well as care to our members so that there's not a financial barrier to them actually getting care, right? One of the biggest problems with healthcare in the U.S. today is the fact that everyone has a huge deductible, they have a big out-of-pocket, and then ultimately, they make decisions based on the fact they've got a mortgage payment or a car payment, or they've got to, you go make a kid's college payment or put shoes on their kid's feet, and they have a tendency to defer care. Our model is set up so that if they need a medication, the medication will be zero. We don't cover every medication. We do pursue a net zero cost for all of our medications. If your physician says this person needs this medication, it's not on your formulary. We do have a prior authorization process where if the physician provides all of the detail about the member having tried those other medications and needs this specific medication, we can get that approved on our health plan.
Non-compliant versus compliant?
Yes, so everyone starts the plan year at zero, right? So everyone, day one, you're enrolled, you start planning year at zero. All of your benefits, as long as you're using in-network, are zero. Compliant, basically with us, just means that you do a Zoom call with our clinician and with our care navigator, which is an advocate for your members. So if they ever have any questions during the year, they know a phone number, they've got a face with a name, they can get in touch with those people. But for the first 120 days, everyone has zero. During that 120 days, all you have to do is do a Zoom call with us. Doesn't matter what health conditions you have, doesn't matter what medications you're on. The whole idea of the call with us is for you to get to know the health plan and for us to get to know you, to what you want to change with your health. Is there anything that you want to do? Do you need our help getting medications so you can have them shipped straight to your door if you need those? We can help you set up physician visits, we can help you find a primary care physician. We can do any number of things through the baseline. But the whole idea of the baseline is just so we can tell you, this is what the plan is, it covers everything at 100%, this is how you find your physicians, this is how you find your medications. It's, the whole idea of the plan is to make it as simple as possible for your members and low cost so that they no longer have to think, okay, my physician said I need to have this expensive thing done, I can't afford it, I'm not going to do it, I'll wait. And then they go somewhere else and get sick and have, you know, down the road, they're in the hospital for multiple days. Care that's delivered earlier is generally a lot cheaper, a lot less expensive, a lot less harsh for the member. If you're diagnosed with something, the longer you wait, the harder it becomes. I have personal history with my family where someone in my family had cancer, and it came on very late, and because of that, it was very, very expensive for us and for the health plan, I will say. But our goal is to make sure that everything that we do keeps the member at zero as much as we possibly can.
Was there anything else, Dr. Baker?
Would be entertaining, questions from the council.
Councilwoman Hood?
Yes, thank you for that information. I looked at your drug approval information on your website, and to get approval for some of these drugs, there's a quite long list of things that you have to meet. And it starts with the physician, but it sort of doesn't end there. There was also some reference to sort of compliance with existing drugs or something like that. And that word bothers me a bit. You know, it's easy to say that a patient ought to be compliant, but there are plenty of reasons why a patient may not be able to be compliant with something. And so I would hate for their coverage or their cost to be, to hinge on that. And considering the baseline assessment that everybody has to have, what if somebody did not disclose a condition they had for which they were not currently being treated? And they later then didn't need treatment for that? Would that disqualify them?
No, all you have to do for the baseline is just show up for the call. You don't have to answer any of the questions. You will during the call be talking to an advocate that will explain how the plan works, where to go to find physicians and medications, but you'll also be talking to a clinician, which is a real physician that is employed by Curative. They'll ask a number of questions. You're not required to answer any questions at all. As long as you show up on that call, you keep zero cost for the entirety.
Okay, I have two more short questions, if that's all right, Mayor. Your plan looks excellent on paper. And I understand that you have been in business for like two years and that this is somewhat of an experiment in looking at how to reduce the cost to people who are covered. So with no co-payment, no deductible, no this, no that, how do you make money?
It's, the idea behind the plan and how we would ultimately make money is that earlier diagnosis is a lot less costly. So, you know, the basic principle of what's happened, you know, when I graduated from college and I started in healthcare, everything was low deductibles. People could use healthcare. As deductibles have increased and out-of-pockets have increased, people have a tendency to defer more and more care. And every time you take just a slight delay in getting care, it can become far more serious. The premise of this is as simple as possible. We are, you use the word experimental, we're beyond the experimental phase at this point. The idea behind it is that having high deductible, having high out-of-pocket has not worked. And, you know, for sort of the net effect, you can change the color of the car every year, but the underlying car is the exact same, you know, with all of the carriers. You've got a high deductible, you've got a high out-of-pocket, you could make it blue this year and green next year, and so on and so forth. If you're not changing the way the car is designed, the way the engine works, the gas you're putting in it, you're never going to get different results. We have to work to get people engaged with healthcare again because over the last 30 years since I've been in it, people have become less and less engaged in their own health, and they've sort of left it up to the carriers to take care of everything that they need, right? We're going to tell you what you need for your diabetes diagnosis, or for your oncology, and this, that, and the other. And ours is not telling them it's all on you now. Ours is just giving them a pathway to get diagnosed, to get your care earlier. And earlier care, there have been studies now that are starting to come out that you get $1 of primary care a day saves you $12 just a year from now if you do your primary care. If you don't do your primary care and you wait until you have a heart attack, you get diagnosed with something very significant, you could end up in the hospital for an extended period of time. It could be, you know, far harder on you and your family, too, right? So the idea behind it is just very simple, is let's change the dialogue and bring the person that's actually getting the care to bring them to the table to have part of that discussion with us.
Okay, thank you. And my final question, and I just want to note that these are questions I have for employees going forward. I will not be covered by this insurance when it is, if and when it is enacted. So I don't really have a personal concern here. I just wanted to make sure that this process that we went through, where we hired someone, an analysis, to look at what policies were out there and then to make a recommendation to us. And I understand that from our side, we paid, is it Alliant, to do this for us, and that was simply a flat fee to do this. And I just want to ask the, to ensure that there is no inducement to Alliant to this particular policy and make that recommendation.
That's correct. There's no additional compensation compared any insurance carrier over the other.
Thank you.
I want to make a comment about that, too, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
I will say that Alliant did bring to the table several different plan options. And so Dr. Baker and I. so Dr. Baker and I and Alliant had an opportunity to sit down and go through the pros and cons, so to speak of all of the policies. We had GMA to quote at an 8% increase on the current plan. We had Cigna to quote at 25% increase on a similar plan. Curative, of course, quoted, and then Kaiser quoted at 6.1% above the current premiums. And so we were not just looking at cost to the city, we were also looking at benefit to the employee, right? And so after we had an opportunity to sit down with Alliant and go through some of the plan options with Curative, it was the city's representation that kind of sealed the deal on the recommendation. So it was not on Alliant. It was their responsibility to bring the options to us.
Okay, thank you. And so I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I have a motion.
Yes.
I have a motion that we adopt a resolution to approve the City of Clarkston Employee Health Benefit for Plan Year 2026.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved, a second to approve a resolution to approve the City of Clarkston's Employee Benefits Program in year 2026. Is there any other discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed. Thank you very much for coming in and clarifying the information for us. We'll move on to 8B, which is to consider for adoption and ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2025 general fund budget appropriating the amounts in the expenditures, expenses as amended, adopting the item or revenue anticipation as amended, and prohibiting expenditures or expenses from exceeding the actual funding available and for other purposes, permitting inspections, licensing, and code enforcement software and avalorum tax amendments, and that is the city manager, Miller Thornton.
Yes, ma'am. As presented last week, this budget amendment serves to present a 400, overall 404,960 dollar decrease in revenue expectation with an offsetting decrease in expenditures of 404,960 dollars. The majority of the amendment is presented based on final certified property avalorum tax digest as presented to the city from the county. And so because we anticipate a significant reduction in revenue compared to what was budgeted for 2025, we also need to present some expenditure adjustments to compensate for the loss, expected loss in revenue. The only other way to offset the revenue reduction is to increase our general fund reserve allocation, except that we don't adequately know what that reserve appropriation is at present.
Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion from the council.
I move that we approve the proposed fiscal year 2025 budget amendment as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved, a second that we approve the proposed amendment as budget as presented. Is there any further discussion? Yes.
Can, briefly, can you clarify, when you say we don't know exactly where the general fund?
So we have, we are working through estimates of where we landed at 2024. Because that audit has not been completed, we don't have finalized amount of general fund expenditure that has been, or general fund reserve that potentially needed to be allocated to the 2024 budget. We have recently completed reconciliations for 2024, right? And so we have an idea, unaudited, of what that looks like. But then we have expenditures, we have a couple of different things that have presented themselves this year. One is the analysis of an unbalanced budget as adopted, continued analysis of the costs over two periods for this building. And then most recently, of course, our analysis of the property tax digest and whatever, general fund allocation needs to go into that. So we are currently assigning about almost $300,000 in general fund reserve. We have this building that we have expended a significant amount of resources for that we believe are in excess of the initial $385,000 that was presented, not just for construction of the space, but for maintenance utilities, those things that we've had to present to you all over the course of time, and then just going through finalizing budget for this year, right? So I think there are too many ifs to present to council to subsidize this reduction in revenue with general fund reserve. That's why we presented an equal amount of expenditure reduction, just to get us through until the final audit is available.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions from the council? All right, with that, you ready for the question? All in favor of the approval to amend the fiscal year 2025 general fund budget as presented, say aye.
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 Motion passed. We'll move to the next item, which is see to consider for approval an alcohol license application for on-premise consumption at Addis Grocery LLC DBA, Addis Abba Groceries and Cafe located at 4144 East Postaleon Avenue, Clarkston, Georgia 30021. With that, Ms. Mitchell isn't in, they've met all.
I'm here.
Oh, you are? Okay, okay, all right.
All right, so again, as we presented last week at the work session, the ARC Committee, the Alcohol Review Committee reviewed the application for Addis Grocery LLC for an alcohol license for Addis Ababa Grocery and Cafe. The application request was for approval of on-premise consumption of beer, wine, and malt beverages. The committee reviewed the new alcohol license application, confirming that the business license has been issued, inspections and measurements were completed, background checks were passed, and zoning compliance was verified. The ARC has determined that the application complies with all requirements and recommends approval for issuance of the new alcohol license.
Thank you, and with that, I will entertain a motion.
Have a motion, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve an alcohol license application for on-premises consumption at Addis Grocery LLC DBA, Addis Ababa Grocery and Cafe located at 4144 East Postaleon Avenue, Clarkston, Georgia 30021, with a no front patio consumption condition.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It has been properly moved and seconded to approve an alcohol license application for on-premise consumption at Addis Grocery LLC DBA, Addis Alabama Grocery and Cafe located at 4144 East Postaleon Avenue, Clarkston, Georgia 30021, with no front patio consumption condition. Is there any further discussion?
Is the applicant here?
No, the applicant is not here.
I don't think the cafe, does the cafe have, the cafe?
Yeah, they has like two little tables in the front.
Okay, is that, Mr. Edwards?
So, okay, you had a question for?
For Mr. Edwards, yeah. On the front patio, can you speak to the front patio consumption question? Is that, because currently, I don't know if that would be allowed anyway, because it's not separate, I forget exactly how our code is written.
The city attorney before the meeting today, and it would require a separate review by city staff, and it would also require a four-foot, essentially some type of wall to where the patio led only into the front door as a means of ingress and egress. So I don't think they have enough space there without it being in the right of way to actually put a wall with the table. So in my conversations with the city attorney, we don't think it's possible for them to actually implement that at this time. But if they were to be able to do it, I think the vice mayor's concern is not having that option at all based on the location of the church being so close.
Got you, okay. Thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman Bell?
Mr. Edwards, you can go back, please.
Just trying to get you some exercise.
Well, he was moving too fast for me to stop him. So I guess my question is, has that been communicated to the applicant? Because I am almost, well, I'm not 100% sure, but if they're asking for an application for utilizing, having alcohol on the premise, they may be under the assumption that that is also allowable use in the cafe area that's outside, but has that been communicated?
This was something that come up as of 5:30 or so this afternoon, so at this time, we've not had time to communicate with the applicant.
All right, yes, Council, Vice Mayor Johnson?
And one of the things I would like for everyone to know, they're not just asking for, I think you just said alcohol, is on premises, so the patio is on the premises. So I was just being proactive, seeing that the church was not notified of the application, and they did not have to be. It was just more of a compromise, because that is a church, a fellowship, a place of fellowship, and just like this is an open room, that is an open strip. There's no way to come out of the church without seeing the cafe, no way to come out of the cafe without seeing the church. So we're not declining the application, just putting a condition on it out of respect for the church.
Councilwoman Bell?
Compromise, when you say compromise, what do you?
If you look in your packet, this application is dated April 29th. We made these changes in July. So at some point, we did look at our 40-year plan to come up with some of the recommendations by our planner, which is what we wanted. So the church was not notified, they didn't, and they could not reject it anyway. So seeing that state law does not govern on-premise consumption, it's just not a good look, and that is the only church in our downtown area. So, well, in that corridor of what we were trying to redo, well, what I envisioned the redevelopment to be, was the Market Street area, and there's not another church there. And it is, it's really a blight look.
So I think we're talking about two different things, though. I'm talking about allowable use based off of the applicant, the application put forward. You're talking about the interpretation or perception of what it looks like as it relates to them having alcohol next to a church. What I'm saying is, the question I asked was, was that communicated with the applicant in regards to what they can and cannot do? And I think that, to your point, if they fill, if they fill the application out in, well, they filled out the application in April, but they made out a change in July, that's what you stated.
We made the changes.
We made the change in July. When did we make the change?
We made the changes so that now it could be a week before our 40-year plan.
The distance restrictions.
Right, so you're saying that it wasn't communicated with the church, and then it also wasn't communicated on what they could and could not do as it relates to having alcohol on the premises?
That is correct.
Okay.
But they have the chairs outside, so I was just looking at the location of the seating now and putting the condition there, not taking away the right to do it, because we have created a law that will allow that in that area.
Councilman Care?
It just seems like to me it's much ado about nothing, because if you look at that sidewalk, you can't fit a four-foot fence without basically blocking the sidewalk entirely. So I don't think this is going to happen either way, so.
We've seen a lot of stuff that didn't fit.
I know, I'm not saying to pose, I'm not saying to pose your minute, I'm just saying.
I get it, I get it, though.
So let me ask Mr. Edwards this question, please. They have two tables out there. Are those permissible in terms of the location?
It does appear that they are underneath the awning of the building, so it would be within their purview to have those tables out there, as long as they do not encroach into the right of way. But the serving of alcohol does bring in the extra regulation of having the four-foot wall that would essentially have to come all the way out, make sure you could walk between the tables. I feel like that'd be a very tight fit. I can't say in the hospital, because I've not done the measurements exactly.
So to your point, are you saying that for the applicant to be able to serve alcohol outside, if we pass this, they will not be in compliance to be able to utilize those two tables to serve alcohol?
Yeah, and it would eliminate them from having the possibility of even applying to do that if they were able to physically fit the wall in.
Okay, so just, just for, I just want to make sure, you're saying that if we approve this, we have to make sure we notify them that they cannot serve that alcohol outside?
Yes, and I would work with our city clerk to make sure when they get their notice that that was included in writing to the applicant.
Okay, so Vice Mayor, do you want to consider? I just asked.
Of what?
To amend your motion sense. They can, okay?
No.
Okay, all right. Councilwoman Bell?
But see, that's my biggest concern, y'all. The applicant has not been informed of what they can or cannot do as it relates to those tables outside. And then we're going to retroactively say to them, if this, hypothetically, if this approved, then hey, move it forward, you can't, there's so many other things that you cannot do as a result of this vote. And so for me, that's where my biggest concern comes from.
And I'll turn to the city attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to clarify for the council what the alcohol code currently says. So it's one question, you know, has a particular business owner been directly communicated with by the city? But separate from that, even though it may not be actually true, I think we can assume, or for legal purposes presume, that people are aware of the city code. The law holds some of that. What the city code says about serving alcohol outside, which is referred to as patio, is that in order to do that, there has to be one way in and one way out, and that's only from the interior of the business. So it's, unless I'm missing something and trying to imagine it, it really wouldn't be possible to have front patio alcohol, because you have to be able to only access that place from the inside. And if that was put down your front door, then you wouldn't be able to access the inside. I guess my point is that if we presume that this applicant has read the code, then they would know that their existing table and chairs are not a place where alcohol would be allowed, because it says in there you have to get specific permission from the city staff. So once you have an alcohol, you need an administrative approval that says your is okay for alcohol.
So one more question I had, so it seems like front patio is out, but I don't know, without looking inside the building, is it possible to do a back patio? Because it seems like that's more what the code would allow, because in that case, there could only be one entrance, and you wouldn't have to worry about blocking off the entrance to the building.
I've never been there.
Yeah, I don't know, but I'm just saying, it seems like we should, if we're going to limit something, it seems like we should just do the front patio, because that's what the church is concerned about, and not necessarily the back patio, which may not be, if it's visible, be visible or not.
I'm sorry, Mr. Edwards, I made you sit down too soon. So with that particular piece of property, is there the possibility of it having a back patio?
So this building is actually kind of built into a hill, so it's possible that they could have people go through the basement, out the back, and do a patio potentially, and make it within those regulations. I'm not saying they would, or that's their plan, I'm just saying hypothetically, they could.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay.
Is the current resolution for just any patio period, or is it the front patio?
I said, Brian, front patio consumption.
Okay.
So you, with that, are you concerned about them potentially doing a back patio, or?
I'm not.
Not, okay.
What are we waiting on?
I'm getting ready to make the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we were waiting on something. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we were waiting on something.
No, I'm getting ready.
Okay.
I got one more question on that. Anything about, so, Mr. Quinn, looking at our current, if we prohibit something that's technically an allowable use, I'm just looking at the, and it sounds like either way, this probably isn't allowable, but if we present, if we prohibit something that is not, or that is an allowable use, such as their front patio consumption being allowed, does that create problems? That's my ultimate concern. I mean, I understand the vice mayor's point on the church and, you know, but I think...
So, the alcohol code does not specifically address placing conditions upon the approval of approval of an application. So, there's nothing to guide us there, and so I kind of fall back on Georgia law more generally, and that, in the case of alcohol licensing, gives a lot of discretion and control to the local government. So, based on that, my opinion is that it is legally appropriate to imp- condition to address a concern that the council has when issuing an alcohol license. If the applicant is dissatisfied with the decision, and they want to be able to have front patio alcohol consumption, then that would be something that they could appeal. And I don't envision a situation in which there could be any worse outcome for the city than giving them that approval, and I would consider that outcome to be very unlikely.
Gotcha. So, then, overall, it sounds like for them to clear both ways, if the goal is to not have front patio consumption, that can be accomplished with or without the amendment to the resolution?
Right, I mean, it sounds like they have technical problems on getting the front patio to meet our code, but I almost feel like it would be a service to them if there's going to be a problem with that to just call it to their attention on the front end.
Thank you. Well, I'm ready for the question.
I'm ready for the question, too. So, we can go ahead. All those in favor to approve the alcohol license application for on-premise consumption at Adise Grocery LLC DBA, Adise Ababa Grocery and Cafe located at 4144 East Postaleon Avenue, Clarkston, Georgia 30021, with a no front patio consumption condition, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passed. We'll keep moving to consider for approval a resolution to appoint Safe Streets for All SS4A Steering Committee members. City Manager Miller Thorne.
We have presented a resolution for appointment of a steering committee in support of the city's comprehensive safety action plan through the Safe Streets for All Planning Grant. The presentation of names comes from a list of stakeholders who have been presented by either the project management team, representation from some of our nonprofits and businesses within the city, and recommendation of nomination by our city council, mayor and city council members.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve or for the committee.
Madam Mayor, can I have a question before...
Sure, go ahead.
The motion. So, looking at some of the proposed committee members on this, I think we have a number of folks that are already on several committees with the city, and, so I lost my place here, I'm going to go to the list of names we had. I believe we have at least one person who's serving already on planning and zoning.
Which list are you looking at?
Which one? The Safe Streets for All, right?
Which list?
The list that was presented to us at the last meeting.
Well, she read the list.
I thought we gave you a more complete list.
Yeah.
Because I know that was a list of some of the ones, but...
I don't have that.
Do you have a final list?
Yeah.
Because the one on the agenda just has blank for Exhibit A. Unless Mark has gotten the list, the rest of us don't have.
Mine's an invisible link, so, sorry. You kind of look at, I'm just going off my memory of our last discussion. So, I think in considering, I guess my question would be, one of my concerns is if we have people who are already, I believe we have some folks who are on planning and zoning and HPC, and possibly some standing advisory committees as well. Here we go.
Thank you.
I think at least one member is also has had in the ring for council, and so that would be, I guess my concern one is having people who are already on several different, you know, their voice is already being heard in several different areas, and then also I believe if we have someone who ends up being elected to council and joining us up here, would, my guess would be, we need to shuffle the deck again when it came to the committee, for the remainder of appointment. So, I mean, I'm open to discussion, I just want to raise the question on that. So, we have...
And I think we're missing people, too. Starks, Harrison Starks is in on here for Vice Mayor Johnson. Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, and then we can move to the motion.
So, I see the confirmed on here, City Manager Miller Thorne, but the yellow line through, what does that indicate?
Contact, I mean contacted but not confirmed.
But this one says confirmed interest. When I look at one on, that's what I want to know.
Yes, so, the yellow line through Samuel Lual, he did not confirm, and the yellow line through Samia was because she was referred to by someone else we were told to reach out to with a religious organization.
Okay.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
Nay.
Yes, and then go ahead.
My, my, my question is for Councilman Perkins. Is there, not to throw you under the bus, is there somebody you don't want to see on here that we need to talk about? Because there's several people on here that have multiple duties, and I thought the city manager wanted certain expertise to go along with the project, so correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, ma'am. The planning, planning and zoning director, myself and the city engineer actually are on the project management team, and so we wanted to present, we started an initial list, right, that presented some stakeholders within the community that had, you know, actually, some of them had several different things that we thought would benefit the committee, like, and I'll just call out Ms. Metford, who's on the planning and zoning board, right? So, she is actively engaged with the city, she bikes throughout the city, so she uses a form of transportation regularly that will be considered in the plan, because one of the parts of the, one of the functions of the plan is to consider all modes of transportation. We talked to Mr. Emmanuel Ransom, who doesn't live in the corridor, but actually, well, I mean, who lives in the corridor and, excuse me, and has mobility issues, so that's a part of the mobility portion of the plan. Do you want to speak to any of these, Mr. Kaiser?
No, they all have their expertise.
Right.
So...
Well, let me address the vice mayor's point, if I may. So, in terms of throwing me under the bus, there's not anybody specific, you know, that I'm looking at, but I know several of the members are on multiple, so my two concerns would be not with the individual, but with their role that they hold, right? And so, Ms. Metford would be one of them, because she's on planning and zoning, and also I believe she's on a standing advisory committee as well, so this would add a third committee to it. So, it could be totally fine, I see there being value in bringing expertise. Mr. Dean Moore, I think is in the audience today as well, is on Historic Preservation Commission, maybe on, well, we can't interact with the audience, maybe not, maybe that's the only one, but I know has also thrown his hat valiantly in the council ring, and so that would be something, I guess, that could change, you know, if he does get elected in November, would that have any implications for the committee in the future? We had a technical advisory committee, I think a couple of years ago, where we didn't want to have any council members on the committee, and so there was a change in leadership, and some people cycled off. That's why I'm asking the question. So, it's nothing personal against any...
Oh, no, 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 it's fine. And to your point, to your point, if we switched, if, for example, Councilman Moore was back on council, then we can have someone else from the historic preservation to be a part of that, if part of what you're doing is connecting those committees. What my concern is, I'm not seeing in terms of more so our, a balance of our immigrant community on this panel. And that is, balance is really important, because from language and everything else, and just understanding that whole portion, especially because we've had a lot of pedestrian issues, we've had issues where we've had people fatalities on the railroad tracks just recently. You know, there isn't that collective, you know, we all person, we all pick people, but when you kind of put the whole thing puzzle together, we're missing out on our, our new residents or our residents who need to make sure that their voices are going to be just as powerful on this as possible. And so, that's my bigger concern, is looking at other people making some decisions, and then we have the issue later on where we didn't, we weren't as inclusive as possible. So, I just wanted to bring that point up, too. That's a big concern for me when I look at it, and it's nothing wrong with what we all did, but when you put everything together and then you kind of look at it...
Yeah, it does have a good...
Right, and so, Councilwoman Bell, and then Councilman Perkins, and then we'll just move, and, but before we do that, I'm sorry, City Manager.
Okay. I definitely hear everything that the council is saying regarding the committee nominations. I want to say that the steering committee is one section of the voice that will, that will inform the plan. So, we were very strict, we are, we do have a project consultant who has brought in a level of expertise within the project management team, right? We have some of the refugee population-related organizations, members on the project management team, right, Mr.?
Right.
Yeah, and then we have a community engagement consultant who is very, will be specific in reaching, you know, the full of the population. So, this is, this group is, again, one voice, one collective voice within a plan of several voices, if that makes sense. So, we have the stakeholder committee, we have the steering committee, we have a project management team. And maybe we need to present, I know in one of my city managers' reports, I presented to you all the project management team, so we can look at that to see if some of the bases that you are speaking of are covered. We believe that they are. And regarding some of the members that are either running for council or on another committee or commission, we were shooting for at least 15 people to start, right? And right now, we're 18. If some of the, some of those members that you have questioned about sitting on several committees, then we will thank them for agreeing to serve, but not serve, right? And so, there are a lot of different ways we can approach this, but we want to get a steering committee solidified fairly quickly, because we are on a tight timeline with this project, right? And we need to start our steering committee meetings here very soon.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Bell, then we'll go ahead and make the motion.
I think that was super helpful. Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Manager Miller Thorne, I think for me, my biggest concern, it's not a concern, but it is, I want you to think through this long term as it relates to this steering committee, is that there need to be more younger folks on here. All our 20, 40 plans is the future of this city, we're talking about sidewalks. And then on top of that, a lot of nonprofits that already have coalitions in the city, I don't see them on here. I mean, even my nominee, the reason I nominated him, because he had a staffer that had a fatality due to walking to work. So, I think that that needs to be a concentrated focus as we think about this, as y'all continue to develop this out, right? That's all I would say.
Okay, all right. Anyone else?
Yes, I have one.
Okay, so, I'm, at this point, I just want a motion. So, we either voted up or down with what we have, because I think, Councilwoman D., you still have a person. Well, because this, do something.
You have a nominee.
You still have a nominee.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have to give your person. You haven't given it yet, because you're out of the country.
I have to make a change.
You haven't done it? So, you haven't given your...
No, I, I have someone who I believe will serve, but he and I have not been able to connect over the holiday week, so...
Okay.
If we approve this, I hope that I would have the opportunity to then add this person at a later date.
I don't see why not. Yes.
Once the approval is made, the list can still be altered?
It can, we might have people that drop out, people that...
All right, that's fine.
I got a motion.
Thank you.
And I don't see why teams recommend...
It's there.
It's there, it's there, unless you want to change it to that 18 and under person. You want that 18 person in there?
Listen, I said add to the list, I need them to stay on the list, okay? I have a motion, you ready?
Yes.
All right. I move to approve a resolution to appoint the Safe Streets for All Steering Committee members that are listed on this document.
Well, we have, did you put Harrison?
I did.
Okay, all right.
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor.
That's okay.
I second.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve a resolution to appoint Safe Streets for All Steering Committee members as listed on this list. Is there any further discussion? Ready for a question? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? Motion passed. And then next, we have a motion to defer the proposed sidewalk amendments to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Councilman Carroll just stepped out.
That key might be stuck.
Okay. Oh!
Quick, make the motion. I almost got him.
Okay, all right.
My card doesn't work.
Okay, that's okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Bell. Your motion, your item is up.
Okay, all right, are you ready to talk about sidewalks?
Yes.
Okay.
And we have it where it's deferred, so we can talk about it.
Yeah, it's just going to P and Z, as I understand it, and which would have to do, because this is zoning change. Basically, just for those who weren't here last week, summary is, the current Clarkston zoning code requires anyone, if you do a more than 50% renovation or you build a new house, to put a stretch of sidewalk in front of the house. And that's whether or not a sidewalk is ever going to be built to be connected there, whether or not it's impossible to build a sidewalk connected to anything else, you still have to build that sidewalk in. And that doesn't really make sense. It increases the impervious water runoff, it causes more cost to the developer, I don't think it's even aesthetically pleasing necessarily to have random strips of sidewalk when nothing else connects them. It's not beneficial for walkability when nothing else connects them. So, the idea is just to remove that requirement, and we can talk later about what replaces it, whether it's a sidewalk bank, whether it's, you know, some sort of right-of-way donation easement, all that can be discussed later. But I just think it doesn't make sense to require people that renovate or develop a new house to just build a random stretch of sidewalk in front of the house, no matter what.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to defer the proposed sidewalk amendment to the Planning and Zoning Committee.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to defer the proposed sidewalk amendments to the Planning and Zoning Commission, Committee. Is there any further discussion? Yes.
You have a question. With sending this to planning and zoning, as I said, go through the text amendment process, is my understanding of what we're doing here, would this prevent us from including research on the sidewalk bank idea that City Manager Miller Thorne proposed?
I don't see why not. They could just present at the same meeting, and they could look at the sidewalk bank and also look at this agenda, it's two different items, you could consider them at the same times.
And we, we as a council, said it was going to, it's fine for that, for staff to work on that, so they, they can move forward with it, so they can have both at the same time to be able to say, we're going to take this part out, this is... be able to say, we're going to take this part out, this is an option, and that way, we're both covered.
Okay, yeah, I think, yeah, because I'm a little less inclined to approve something that just removes it completely, because once you remove it completely, then, you know, we don't, we don't have any backup there.
Plan A, Plan B.
Yeah, so as long as it's together.
Okay. Any other comments? Ready for a question? All in favor to defer the proposed sidewalk amendments to the Planning and Zoning Commission, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion pass. Move to consider for adoption and ordinance approving a rezoning from low-density residential commercial NC1 to high-density neighborhood residential NC3 at 905 Mel Avenue, parcel ID number 1809710048. Mr. Edwards.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So on this one, they're just looking to rezone 905 Mel Avenue to a conglomeration of five parcels to do a future residential development, and with that, staff is recommending approval of this, and Planning and Zoning Commission also recommending approval of this. I'll turn it over to you for any further questions.
Okay, thank you, and this has gone through the public hearing process, which was handled last work session, so at this time, all we have to do is vote this up or down. So I'll entertain a motion.
I have a motion.
Oh, well, see, Jamie had his.
I had my hand up first, technically.
I recognize Councilman Carroll.
I'm there that we approve the rezoning of this parcel, NR3.
Second.
Okay. It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve rezoning this parcel from NC1 to NR3 at 905 Mel Avenue. Is there any further discussion? Ready for a question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed, say nay. All right, motion pass. We'll move to the next one. You just needed to stay up there, Mr. Edwards. That is to consider for adoption and ordinance to amend Chapter 16, Article Number, Article 3 of the city code, considering special events to clarify the definition of a special event to specify application requirements, insurance standards, and penalties for noncompliance. Mr. Edwards.
So the updates from the last read, we've got Section 16-33E2, we updated to say proof of insurance required by Section 16-55 of this article, just making sure it's in both places, so it would never be missed by current or future staff. Then we have 16-33E5, we added a whole harmless or indemnification agreement must be submitted and approved by the city manager or their designee. And then under 16-44 subsection E, we updated it to include a minimum of one certified law enforcement officer per hundred anticipated attendees shall be engaged by the promoter and shall be present for the full duration of the event. And then the last section there, under the insurance requirements, Dr. Baker did reach out to our insurance company, and with the whole timeless and indemnification and these requirements, we believe it that everything would be fine and we would be covered, and that's the only updates from the last read. I will turn it over to you for any questions.
Can, can we add, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor.
With the certified law enforcement, is it beneficial to say that the enforcement officer has to be off-duty? Chief?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that something we need to add to the motion, or is that something that you can put in policy?
We can put it in policy.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're okay with that. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I have a motion.
Yes.
I move that we approve proposed text amendment to the special events ordinance.
Okay.
A second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the text amendment to the special events ordinance, is there any further discussion? You ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion pass, and at this time, we're in our new building.
I have a motion, Madam Mayor. Oh, I'm so tired.
Executive.
Don't take away from my moment. Thank you. So we are in our new building, so now we're going to recess for executive session, but unlike previously where you had to leave, just in case you want to just stay, you can stay in here, and we're going to go to another room and meet. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to recess.
I have a, oh, go right.
Oh, I was looking at you. You.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Yes.
I move to adjourn.
No, we're not going.
No, no, no. We're going to session.
I'm ready to go. I move to go into executive session.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we recess to go to the executive session, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion pass, so you can stay or go.